Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Today is July 18th. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of July 11th, 2016, as proposed.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the agenda and the minutes of July 11th. Is any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We have three travel requests today, if someone would take that.
Sergeant Farmer, Officer Bovee, and one other to attend K-9 selection class in Denver, Indiana, August 7th through 9th, not to exceed $1,094. Secondly, Lieutenant Locke to attend joint fire investigation seminar annual meeting, Council Bluffs, Iowa September 20th through the 23rd, not to exceed $700. And lastly, Ruth Muller, property evidence technician, attend International Association for Property Evidence Property Room Management Class, Minneapolis, Minnesota, August 23rd to the 25th, not to exceed $888.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the travel requests. Questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Pre-oths?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following: preauthorization, Center for the Arts with an amount and estimated shipping and handling of $1,400 for advertising with Lamar, four billboards to promote Stem and Stein, August 2016. Next is Housing Authority with amount with estimated shipping and handling of $500 for refreshments for the fiscal year '16 resident meetings per HUD regulations to be held at the Ridgeway Towers. Next is Leisure Services with amount and estimated shipping and handling of $5,268 for tip and roll bleachers to assist with seating for larger events at the Cedar Valley Sports Complex. Next is the Police Department with amount and estimated shipping and handling of $10,000 for purchase of a new K-9. Next is Sewer Department with amount with estimated shipping and handling of $5,099 and 11 cents plus $300 shipping and handling for replacement of the VFD Speed Drive and Accessories for the Easton RAS Pump. Next is the Sewer Department with amount and estimated shipping and handling of $4,428 for replacement of impeller and volute gasket for Park Road Lift Station Pump Number Three. And finally is for Waste Management Services, amount estimated shipping and handling of $2,201.73 for renewal of two ARC GIS Desktop Basic Single Use License Maintenance and one additional ARC GIS license purchase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Any questions or discussion, any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. And I'll make a motion to approve the Budget Line Item Amendments, which are on file at the City Clerk's Office, and also the bills payment this week. And the bills payment are $1,808,720.75. That's 1,808,720.75.
Checking.
Motion and a second on the Budget Line Item Amendments and the bills payments, are any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid.
Second.
Motion and a second for adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to our council meeting on this July 18th. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
I'm gonna read Mr. Powers, because you're gonna be on the roll call here real quick. So, Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
All right. Now, I would ask if you would like to stand, it's certainly your option for a moment of silence. As we take a look around our entire country and the happenings taking place to things that have happened here locally as well, I'd ask that if you would, lead your hearts and your minds to thinking about those impacted over the past week. All right, thank you. Our pledge will be given by Eric Thorson, our engineer.
May you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of July 11th, 2016, regular session as proposed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, we have minutes. Right now, I'd ask if we have our proclamation declaring July 17th to the 23rd as Water and Waste Water Workers of Iowa Week. So with Dennis Clark and Steve Holmbricker, please join me out front. Thank you, gentlemen. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas our surface and groundwaters are a treasure natural resource, and whereas the water and wastewater workforce of the City of Waterloo have dedicated themselves to applying environmental science to enhance the drinking and recreational waters of our great city, and whereas their applied environmental science-based knowledge and practices continue to be a vital element in improving the quality of life of our citizens and visitors, and whereas these employees preserve and protect the public's health in our city while promoting sustainability in our way of living, now therefore be it resolved that I, Quentin, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of July 17th to the 23rd, 2016, as Water and Waste Water Workers of Iowa Week. And, gentlemen, which one of you would?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of my fellow workers, I want to thank you and the other council members in the City of Waterloo for recognizing us for the work that we do. We are actually having, if any of the council members or mayor want to come out, we're having a little luncheon tomorrow, on Wednesday, actually, at noon, if anybody's welcome to join us, so, in celebration of this, thank you.
All right. Didn't you have anything? A few words, all right. All right, thank you, gentlemen. All right, thank you. All right, now, we have a swearing-in ceremony of Tom Powers for his oath of office, so, Tom, would you please come forward? All right, sir. All right, Tom, we have an oath of office, and would you please repeat after me? And if anyone would like to take pictures, if you want to stand up front and take them, please, please do so as well. But raise your right hand, sir. I, state your nay.
Aye, Tom Powers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
In the City of Waterloo.
In the City of Waterloo.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Blackhawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. All right, you can't run now. And as you know, last week we had an election. Tom and Margaret Klein ran, and they ran superb campaigns, and it's something about when you put your own name on the line to try to stand up and do what you feel is right. So although she did not win this time, I want to ask her to continue to stay involved and look forward to working with Councilman Powers as we move on.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items one through eight, and within that are the bills payment. The bills payment this week are $1,808,720.75. That's 1,808,720.75.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to make note, I know that this is just a asking to pass a resolution to have the date of, what is this, number four, a resolution setting date of public hearing, but I just want to draw attention to the fact that this is the second time this has come before us, and it's also been denied two times at planning and zoning. So I would hope that council would please review and keep that in mind when it comes up on August 1st.
All right, and today is just setting the date of hearing, so we look forward to that type of conversation during the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Senator, I had a call about the liquor license for 821 Broadway Street. Chief, that's not one of our problem facilities over in that neighborhood, is that correct?
What number is that?
Director of Safety, that is correct. It was vetted by one of our sergeants and apparently met the threshold.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'm curious. I believe we have Jason Welsh in the audience, if you would stand, please. All right, Jason has been appointed to the position of Facility Services Manager for the Waterloo Center for the Arts, so we want to congratulate you, thank you for being here, and we look forward to some great work taking place. Thank you, Jason. If you would like to stay and get a lesson in civic responsibilities, you're more than welcome to do so, if not, we won't take offense till you leave, so, thank you. All right, public hearings, number two.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the bid document and specifications for emulsions to support the fiscal year 2017 Seal Code program.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of bid documents, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second, are there any questions about this item, council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, that carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, any questions? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the City Clerk to read bids and refer to the Public Works Director for review.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, the first bid was from Betuminous Materials and Supply of Des Moines, Iowa. I don't know that I'm gonna read all these, there's several different bid amounts per gallon for each type, they are all online and available in the clerk's office. The second bid was from Flint Hills Resources of Dubuque, Iowa, again, the same thing for different quantities, different types, and the per gallons in there are online and available in the clerk's office, if anybody wants to review them.
All right, could someone take items three, four, and five?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the following resolutions. Number three is a resolution approving completion of project recommendation of acceptance of work performed by failure early construction of Waterloo, Iowa, and release $9,995.20 retainer to failure early construction in conjunction with Waterloo Center for the Arts Toilet Room renovation. Number four is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by KWS Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, at a total cost of $46,855 in conjunction with University and Fletcher Traffic Safety Improvements Contract Number CS-TSF-7155 Perrin 738-85-07. And five is a resolution approving application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for ICAP funding for Ainsborough Avenue, additional fifth lane and revised traffic signal for $295,500 with a 20 percent local match by the City of Waterloo and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, motion has a second. Is there anyone with any questions about these three items?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have a little overview on item number five and how that's gonna lay out over there on Ainsborough.
All right, Sandy.
Sandy, great, we're looking into traffic. What we have done is worked with the consolator engineer and our traffic engineer, and they have prepared an application to hopefully be awarded ICAP funding. What we will do, we're also working on planning and engineering to add a fifth lane, which would be a central lane, which would change the traffic signal programming to left turns, protective left turns, and take away what's there now.
So what would be the starting point and stopping point of that fifth lane?
Right after Blackhawk Street or Blackhawk Road, and then it will go, it will continue on to University Avenue, which passed down and is already in the east side.
And is it gonna be on the south side of Ainsborough or on the north side that you're gonna have to acquire some additional property?
It would be the south side of Des Moines, on the east side.
There's three blocks there, so.
Yeah.
So it'd be on the Waterloo side of Ainsborough, correct?
The east side.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sandy, do we have an estimate of the acquisition of property, what's that gonna cost us? That's gonna be kind of expensive through there.
We don't at this time.
Well, is it in the funding, are we?
It should be figured in, but we estimate it more than sure.
Okay.
All right, any other questions about these items? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
All right, those items carried. Take six, seven, and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving phone service contract with Century Link for an additional two years to cover POTs lines at a cost of $25.99 per line per month. Number seven, resolution approving an agreement with Barron State Consulting Group to complete required arbitrage testing for the general obligation bonds issued in 2009 and 2011 in an amount not to exceed $5,000, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number eight, a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $350,000 for engineering and construction-related services for Waterloo sanitary sewer system capacity assessment and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, any questions about these three items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On number seven, is that the result of us not spending those bonds, is that? We've had this before, is that why we have to do that again, that testing again?
So, Chief Financial Officer, we have to do it at least once for every bond issue. We are doing it twice for the 2009s because they weren't spent down in the first five years.
Which bond, what were the purpose of those two bond issues? Or are they?
There would be many, it's our main GO issue that we do annually.
All right, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, item number eight, am I correct that this is not something that we can do in-house? I mean, it seems like we've kind of expanded our talent pool in that department, and I just had a call asking that question, if we're gonna need to continue to outsource that type of work or some of that we could be doing internally.
Steve Holmbricker, Waste Management Services Director. We've looked at that, and there are some things we're able to do internally, and we're trying to do that where we can and do it reasonably. This requires a special skill set, in our opinion, that it's best done by AECOM, especially with the system knowledge that they already have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
All right, those items carried. Could someone take nine and 10, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the award of asbestos survey services contract in the amount of $9,840 to Hawkeye Environmental for properties located at 1020 Wellington Street, 1326 Franklin Street, 1107 Commercial Street, 1120 Washington Street, 27 John Street, 915 Newell Street, 929 Linden Avenue, 408 to 410 Logan Avenue, 71 Franklin Street, 1201 Mulberry Street, 322 Crescent Place, 326 Crescent Place, 820 Newell Street, 1131 Birch Avenue, 310 Oak Street, 414 Thompson Street, 847 Dawson Street, 717 Fairview Avenue, 613 West 7th Street, 106 Woodside Drive, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number 10 is a resolution approving and accepting certain acquisition contract and accepting certain deeds to sell property to the City of Waterloo for the acquisition of needed property for Delaney Creek Drainage Improvements from Waterloo Memorial Park Cemetery for $21,967.44, that's fee title acquisition located at 3430 West 4th Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, just one correction on number nine, it's 3126 Franklin Street, not 1326. But does anyone have any questions for nine and 10?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On 10, Noel, is, will that help some of that flooding that has occurred in the past behind the development on Ridgeway and those houses over there?
No, nor Eric.
Eric Thorsten, engineer. The Delane Project includes the development of a detention pond on the old school site, and so we have some other easements that we need to get, and this is one of those. Once we have all the easements, we'll be able to do some soil moorings that are needed and then finish up the design. So, you know, we'll provide detention and reduce flooding along Delane Creek.
Which is bordering those houses on the other side of Cherry Creek back there?
No, no, this is farther to the east. This would be just kind of behind Hy-Vee and the video store, kind of between Fourth and Ainsborough.
Oh, but I thought we're buying some land from the cemetery.
Well, this, yeah, this is cemetery on Fourth Street.
Yeah, but isn't that a but, what I'm talking about, those houses?
Well, this is a cemetery at the corner of Ridgeway and Fourth.
Yeah.
There's another one further to the west that butts Cherry Creek and that development, so it's two different cemeteries.
Okay, all right, got you, thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote?
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Could someone take 11 through 13?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the system-wide improvement framework letter of intent for continued rehabilitation eligibility of sanitary sewers and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number 12, resolution approving an agreement with Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad Company for interconnect, for connecting the railroad controller with the automatic crossing signals to the traffic signal controller for railroad preemption of traffic signals at a cost of $74,069, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 13, a resolution approving agreement with HR Green Incorporated in the amount of $6,000 for the preparation of a United States Environmental Protection Agency community-wide brownfields grant totaling $200,000, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign and execute said agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, any questions about these items?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On number 11, are we still estimating that's about three and a half million dollars to fix those gate wells, whatever it was?
Eric.
Eric Thorsten, yes, it's right around three million, but it's not fully designed yet. This is just the letter that goes into the Corps that indicates that we'll be developing a plan over the next, well, we have up to two years, but we think we can have it developed in less time than that and get started on that. And the most important thing about this is, once the council approves, the mayor signs, we get into the Corps, and if they approve this, all of our levee system is back in the rehab program, so that if we have any flood events and damage to that system, then the Corps will reimburse us for repairs, which right now we are not.
Are they decertified right now?
Not really decertified, we're just not in the rehab program.
Okay.
And that related to, it's really all following Katrina, and the Corps' much stricter interpretation of their inspections and things we have to do. And you have to give a lot of credit to a lot of city departments, Public Works, Leisure Services, Waste Management, even the Attorney's Office has been involved in doing all the things that are necessary, helping Engineering Department get us back into that program.
And if they give us this couple of years to get the plan, they're not, that way we won't have to have flood insurance throughout the city, wasn't that one of the problems?
That could be a possibility if we... That, that could be a possibility if we don't get back into the plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Okay, we're just going to shut it off.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Those items carried. Number 14.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Walper.
Number 14 is a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance approving a request to vacate certain tracts of land, formally portions of West San Marnan Drive right away.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Um, council discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr.
I just want to make sure we're clear. What this ordinance is doing, we're not conveying or selling, we're simply vacating that property.
Let's say that publicly. Nine to head doesn't work.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The action, uh, number 14 is just to vacate, uh, the portion that will be sold, uh, I believe under the consent, uh, A2, it was set a data hearing to sell that land, um, and set that data hearing as August 1st to go ahead and sell the land according to 306 point, or according to the city policy now, so we've already followed 306.23, but this is the first step is to vacate it tonight.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor. Noel, Noel, can I ask, just for simplistic purposes, so why does it say request to vacate, sell, and convey?
You want me to, or? Um, that was placed on there because originally, as you may recall, um, we had as an item on here, um, to sell and convey because we had to take bids on this to follow 306.23. Since no bids are received into that formal process, we're just vacating now, um, and we have to go through a different process to go ahead and sell, um, to, uh, San Marnan LTD group.
Did you want to add to that, or are you comfortable with that?
No, we basically just didn't want to change the title just so that the project stays together if anybody would search it when we were taking bids. Obviously, if we got bids, we would be in a different boat right now, so we just left the title the same, but the action is just the ordinance.
Got you, thank you. Yes, sir.
David Dryer, 3145 West 4th Street. Um, I guess Noel partially answered my question, however, um, seeing that that property came up for sale to adjacent, previous adjacent or adjacent property owners only, um, and we did not get a bid from the potential people that would inherit this, if you want to say it that way. Uh, it seemed kind of strange that, that, uh, after we gave them $750,000 already, they wouldn't at least pay more than a dollar for it. Uh, it kind of bothers me as a taxpayer that, that we can do this all the time and keep putting the bill back on the taxpayer. Um, if I could have bid on it, I'd have bid on it and just left it so I could mow it. Because then they would at least force the property owner that's adjacent now to pay more than a dollar. I think we need to start looking at getting these people that are working you, working the system, to start paying some sort of a fair share to help relieve our property taxes. Thank you.
Jim Walsh, VGM Group, 1111 West San Marnan Drive. I wasn't going to say anything, but I have to now. Uh, this is a ditch in front of the VGM property that the city hasn't made a dime off of ever since it's been in existence. VGM's maintained it ever since we've located out there. I know most of you know that, but I want to make sure the public knows that. Uh, VGM does pay and pays a lot. We pay over a half million dollars a year now in property taxes in the city of Waterloo for our buildings and we'll be paying more shortly because of the new building we put up. You all already agreed to do this, to convey that ditch in front of our, uh, property so that we could spend more money to make it pretty and fix it up so it'll be a, a useful piece of land in the future. I've got another dozen things I'm not going to bother saying, but, uh, we've got 850 people who work out there who are proud to work there. And to be slandered at these meetings as if we're some kind of cheapskate really offends them and it offends me, so I have to speak out. I'm sorry to have to take your time doing this. It's a good deal for the city, it was a good deal, it is a good deal, it will get done, and I hope everybody can appreciate that we're not freeloadin' on anybody. Thank you.
All right, any other, any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm going to abstain from this, even though I don't get any financial benefit by this, this is, uh, uh, the management, I'm not on any board, it's out there, so, but I will abstain just for public perception purposes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that items carries. Uh, wow, six o'clock. That is the, uh, end of the, um, regular meeting and we have oral presentations before we go into executive session. Uh, the oral presentation, we have a gentleman that called and would like to be, um, recognized first, and that's Mr. Steve Murphy, if he would please come up to address the council.
Mayor, Council, Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. So, uh, tonight I want to, uh, address just a single item, and that is, uh, public safety cameras. It's time, and, and I had already laid the groundwork with a couple of city council people before the recent spate of, of shootings, but it certainly, uh, um, what happened, uh, on Logan on Sunday and what's been happening on our trails, I certainly think that this brings it to the forefront. What we're looking for, and I think you'll hear it from a number of constituents, and I think you'll hear it from the constituents regularly until we get some movement, is we want a system very similar to Dubuque. We want public cameras, we want to be able to point to them throughout the city and say, "This area is protected 24/7, 365." Um, I understand that the police department needs other cameras that they can move around, that's not what this request is about. This request is cameras tied in to the safety system like Dubuque has, that they can in real time bring up 16 cameras at a time, and when they get a call in, they can actually, uh, pull up that camera and immediately watch what's unfolding and whether that be a fire or trail or whatever system they need to look at. So, um, we're paying round number 1760 per hun, per a thousand of taxable value. We want to start seeing something for our money. We want to be safer than we are now. I hate that our fallback position is you can't be on the trail unless you got a buddy to go with you. So now it's not a matter of jumped on your bike or take, grabbing your dog. You gotta go find someone that's got the same schedule and that wants to go to the same place and at the same time as you. And I just, again, I go back to, for $17.60 some odd cents, that is not an acceptable response. And I don't think it'd be acceptable to anyone. We, we want to protect our citizens. I see it as infrastructure investment. I see it as no different than the money we give a brewery, the money we spend to build the sportsplex and the money we're going to spend to build the whitewater. If you have money for those wants, then I'm going to say this is a need. This is no different than a water line, a sewer line, or the road in front of, of the building. This is the infrastructure that you need to protect the citizens. I know it's going to cost some money, and I'm going to get to that in a second, but what I'm asking you to do is help every resident, whether you own a home or live here in a rental, help us protect our investment. We have lived here and we are watching our home values drop off. We are watching new construction starts move to the west, a little bit to the north, but a lot to the west, that was in the Courier. And I'm saying, if you stick with this, start now, when the home values rise, because citizens will be safer, they'll feel safer, and we can tell people that it's safe to come to Waterloo. My house value will go up, I'll pay more taxes because it's probably going to be $18, $19, $1,000, and you'll get your investment back. So what I'm saying is, I've made an investment in the city, so many residents have made an investment in the city, I'm asking you to help protect our investment and for you guys to find the money to make an investment in the city. Let's talk about a funding source. I hate to come up here and say, "Gimme, gimme, gimme," without an idea. I think we could agree that what's gone on here for the last couple of years constitutes an emergency. What I'm asking is we take the emergency levy and we use that to start funding the cost of the cameras and the infrastructure. If the infrastructure was damaged in a previous lightning strike and not repaired, it's infrastructure, we expect that. When we give that to you, we expect it to be maintained. So that emergency levy right now, as best as I can tell, kind of washes through the budget at the end of the year to kind of help true things up. And that doesn't rise the level of an emergency to me, that's just management. Can't do it all at once, this may be a 10 or 15-year journey that we go on together, but if we don't get started, we'll never get there. We are not protecting our citizens in a way that I think they want to be protected. If I am the only one that ever comes down here, ever sends an email or contacts you when you're out in the public, if I'm the only one that ever brings this up, feel free to ignore it because this is just one citizen. But I think what you're going to find is that there are more people interested in this than you're ever going to imagine, because we've kind of tried this message out on social media and people are tired. I'm sure Chief Chalk is tired of sending his officers out for, for all these crimes. We want cameras in the sky, is that five minutes? Sorry, we want cameras in the sky, we want to be able to point to them and say, "When you come to Waterloo, you are protected 24/7, 365." And I want to start with the emergency levy and use that money between now and the end of the year. Thank you for your time, sorry I ran over.
Thank you.
Gaveing Council, Mayor, First to Be a Cazzer, 500 Sycamore Street. I'm backing with the same complaint about the curb cuts. I'm sorry, but the coal tar asphalt does not last long. Across street from my unit on 500 Sycamore, 400, 501 Sycamore Building, there's a curb cut that was coal tar repaired, it's completely destroyed right now. Thank you for your time and hope, pray we can all work together and make this a better, more accessible city for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Sherman, 1750 Robin Road. Uh, this is just an idea, I don't have any facts or anything. We're spending a lot of money on outside consultants and stuff, uh, especially with the sewer plan, I, I have no clue whether this will work or not, but would it be cheaper to hire, uh, another person, uh, to go along with our crew, uh, that's an expert in the field? It seems like, uh, for the sheer amount of cash that's being changed, or is changing hands, uh, would it be cheaper if we, we went in-house with it and got the right help? I don't know, it's just a question, thank you.
I've asked that same question to the question.
Ted Liederman, 1758 Pinehurst Lane, Waterloo, Iowa. Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, I, I've been impressed coming here, uh, to the city council meetings, the few times I come, because I see a group of, uh, older citizens who come here weekly, they spend their time as volunteers, and they are interested in our city and improving our city and lowering our costs of, uh, government. And what brings it to the fore is about two months ago, one of these men who was in the back, uh, had asked, when the budgeting was requested, for about $69,000 for the improvement on Kimball. And this was an accessory charge to what had already been paid. And they asked you about it, and I don't expect you to be familiar with it or anyone here, because we don't normally have photographic memory, but you looked for assistance and one of the people told you that apparently there's an optional or accessory charge for $69,000 for Kimball, uh, for improvements. Now, I suggest that in the future, because they said this and they're watching our budget, that if there is accessory charge, when this comes through, and maybe it's being done today, but when this charge comes through, what I'd like the city to have is, if the Cedar Rapids group says we owe another $69,000, along with that bill, they should send a copy of the document documenting that we've signed, that we owe another $69,000 to substantiate their bill. In addition, uh, while they're doing construction, our businesses, uh, have decreased business on Kimball and there's decreased employment because there's decreased expenditure. So it's costing revenue to our city for these prolonged construction sites on our streets. And maybe in the future, we might be able to do more, brighter, uh, contracts, where we contract people and we give them a penalty if they don't do the construction that they state by a certain time. Uh, thank you for your consideration, it's always fun to be here, I enjoy the city of Waterloo, I enjoy the mayor, I enjoy the city council, I have fun here, it's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Greer, 23 Lafayette Street. I came tonight to show my appreciation that the council is now back at full status of members. I also come to express my expectations of the council. I hope you are a delegation of dreamers and not a bunch of bean counters, or even worse, micromanagers. There is a department for counting the beans, so I hope you will instead commit yourself to dreaming big for the future of the city, to keep it thriving and not us dear. I extend the expectation to the mayor and the department heads, dream big first and then find the correct fiscal balance to make it work. Unfortunately, the format of the council meeting is to publicly deal with all the legal steps required of a council in a city. I get that, and though I find it boring, I do understand the need. I hope you do your diligence, but still see your responsibility as dreaming big for the future. I dream of the day a council meeting will be 20 minutes of agenda and 40 minutes of public dreaming. I think I am just experiencing that with a shorter meeting tonight and that first guy's dream that he presented to you. Thank you.
Jerry, what do you mean boring? All right. Uh, is there anyone else before we go to executive session?
David Dryer, 3145 West 4th Street. I have to give kudos to Steve Murphy for his presentation. Uh, I noticed, I read in the paper that Mr. Chalk wants, uh, more businesses to put in cameras, but I don't think that is the only answer. I think we need more cameras on the streets so that we catch these people leaving or coming or whatever. Um, my understanding from some research I've done is that Dubuque has very good success at this and they have more convictions, or they have more prevention of crimes because there's a camera up there. Uh, they also have a system that I'm understanding from reading their documents, is that it is proven in court, and I want, I guess I want to emphasize that let's not go cheap. Uh, I'm a taxpayer, you know I don't like expenses, but at the same time, we need a court system that will accept what we have on the street so that when Mr. Chalk presents the case with his officers, that it is convictable if necessary. Thank you.
Randy Hare, 111 Highland. I just want to add a point of exclamation to, uh, Steve Murphy's presentation. I think we have a chance here, number one, to make citizens safer, but number two, to take the image of Waterloo, which has sometime been tarnished by things said that not are always, that are not always true, and make that image something very positive, where we can say we're taking a first step forward beyond most other ones, maybe joining hands with Dubuque to help our police, which we should be doing as much as we can because they have one of the worst jobs in town. they have one of the worst jobs in town. I think this idea about the cameras, I think, should be looked at very, very seriously and look at what we can do, and if we could, maybe we can find some of these other people in town who will help donate towards this effort. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neil. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Mayor, I would like to take the lead on this camera business. I'm on the, as you know, I'm the vice chair of the Public Safety Committee, and we would like, the Public Safety Committee would like to get very involved and drive this issue forward. So I'm formally asking you to support us in our mission to make Waterloo a safer place. The police told me at a meeting before the budget hearing that if you're, don't feel safe, you're not safe, and we need to feel safe.
You said to support your mission of making Waterloo safe, that's, I do believe in making Waterloo safe. We will, we will talk about it a little bit further and go from there. Mr. Chalk has already been doing research and visited, visited this area, but we can definitely talk about that tomorrow at another time. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes, thank you. I would echo Mr. Murphy's request for the cameras. I think that that would, number one, be a big deterrent of crime, as well as, and I think we would feel safer if we had cameras, if we start out in a logical plan to rule those out. Secondly, I want to thank everyone that voted for the Ward One election, taking the time to do that. I want to thank both candidates for running. I know it takes a lot of work to do that and to step up, and like the mayor said, you know, there is a lot to that and to put your name on that, and so I appreciate the hard work that everybody went through on that. I appreciate, you know, half of the residents that voted, obviously were concerned with taxes, and I appreciate that, and, you know, we got to do more than just holding the line, though, guys. There's a couple of things that are holding us back, and it's the crime element that Tom was talking, Steve's talking about, and it's taxes. And as we know, our levy rate's about thirty-six percent higher than a neighbor to the west. So, I want to continue to talk about that. I want to meet, invite everyone in my ward, Ward Two, plus anyone else who wants to come. On the twentieth of July, we're just going to talk some more about where does the city want to be, your concerns, possibly some realistic goals for us to move forward in the next years. I also really appreciated Dr. Lindeman's comment in the Courier regarding the school budget and needs and wants, and that falls in line with where we're at. In the city, we have needs and wants, and we have to balance those things out appropriately. So, I want to continue to look at that on a very objective manner. Thank you very much.
And just for, just for some clarification, the council has signed with an institute for decision-making at the University of Northern Iowa so that we can take a look at where we're going to as a council. Council, our policymakers, and the staff need to make sure that we're adhering to what the majority of the council members want, and that will be in the last, last week of August, if I'm not mistaken. So we'll be moving forward. From there, after council meets, we'll get goals and objectives, and we'll wrap staff's objectives around the goals of the council, and then also put in benchmarks so we can take, take a look at where we're at from year one to year two to year five so that we can make sure that staff aligns with council goals as well. So we are moving in that direction. That was something that was stated that is happening, so I look forward and hoping that all council members will do their best to attend that session and that we can continue to move forward as a city of Waterloo. And so, Mr. Welper?
Make a motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn to executive session.
Second. Motion's been made. Mr. Zellifer, are we doing it so correctly?
Yes, we are. Dave Zellifer, City Attorney, I do have the authority to say whether or not we're properly going into executive session. We are, according to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five one J, to discuss the purchase of real estate.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.